We will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Lockhart, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, thank you for letting us all gather here today on this wonderful month of Black History Month. We gathered together today in all creeds and races from generations, past and present. I'd like to ask that you give us strength to go together, to move this city forward together. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine and justice for all.
Mr. President, it's time to roll, please.
Mr. Rodding?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Ms. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Now, if someone cared to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Poole?
Go move.
Second.
Question, second discussion, let objection be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of January 28th, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodding.
I'm willing to accept the minutes of January 28th. Formal reasons.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion, let objection be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Audience participation, anyone wishing to comment on any of our regular agenda items, please step to the microphone, give us your name, your address, and share with us your thoughts. And seeing no one move to the microphone, we will start with two presentations we have. Tiffany Taylor, our GIS analyst, is here to provide us with the GIS department update. Sir? I'm sorry. I misunderstood what Commissioner Lockhart was asking. He was communicating to me, if we could just pause on that for just a second, Ms. Taylor. This is Black History Month, and Commissioner Lockhart had asked for an opportunity to make comments about it, and I welcomed that, and I thought that that was part of what you'd said already, but I thought you were going to go a little longer, but please.
Well, there was, but you went right through. You were like, "Let's go." I just wanted to recognize Black History Month as I do every year. The uniqueness of it is where we were and where we are now today. In 2019, one of the most significant things about this year is that this is the 400th anniversary of 19 slaves arriving that were from Africa to mainland North America, this year, 400 years away. African-Americans who were disembarked in Jamestown were captives, stolen by Portuguese slave traders, and then brought, or, excuse me, bought by English pirates, and then sold in bondage, that then eventually came to what we now know as the United States. And this would ultimately let loose what at that time would be global slave trading, and then here in America, which started off slavery. And so, I just wanted to notate something. Since we now have a Dr. Martin Luther King statue that first arrived here just about a week or so ago, I thought it'd be fitting to give a small quote from Dr. King, and it is, "Only in darkness can you see the stars; let no man pull you, so low as to hate him." There comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe, nor politic, nor popular, but he must take it because his consequence, or, excuse me, his conscience tells him what is right. And in our community, we've had, since 1974, 10 African-American city commissioners. And I just wanted to list those quickly today. The first being Thomas Darden, in 1974, also our first African-American commission president. Following him was Al Mason, and then Leroy Sizemore, Danny Edmund, Brett Fuqua, Purvis Brown, Deidre Cole, Wes Poole, Naomi Twine, and then, of course, myself, Greg Lockhart. And I want to say that we have moved so far ahead and together, and you look at the room where we have a mix of folks here, in the, I think it's 200 years of Sandusky now, we've got our first African-American fire chief, to my right, Richard Wilcox, if I'm correct. And then, sitting in front of me, is the new president of the NAACP in Sandusky, the Sardaro Murphy. Congratulations to you, sir. Very good. And I want to say that I'm so proud of where we're going together, and that we're following in the footsteps of Dr. Martin Luther King and some of the other commissioners that have gone here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lockhart. I appreciate your bringing all of that to the fore. Sandusky really does have an edge over a lot of communities in terms of our diversity, our understanding of each other, but it's something that we need to work every single day to understand better, and we need to work at it because our country as a whole has a serious problem. But it's through the work of a lot of good people that we make progress, and it's every day, inch by inch, person by person, hand by hand, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Taylor, thank you for waiting.
All right. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, residents, and my fellow staff members, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present what we've done in the past year, the highlights of our GIS program. And I'd like to start by introducing all of you to the parks amenity map, also called the City of Sandusky Park Explorer. This is a monumental effort that our 2018 engineering interns, Thomas Hustler and Nicole Light, spent the majority of their summer on. They went to each park in the city, and they documented and geo-tagged every single asset in that park. So that's everything from dedication plaques to our big play equipment to our pavilions. And what they did with that, eventually, as they were wrapping up, was create this interactive web map that's going to be available soon on our city website. I'm going to try for a live demo here. What this is going to allow our residents to do is explore all of our city parks and what they have to offer. As you can see here, it's going to show up with the area imagery and all of the parks delineated on our map. And what you can do on here is say that I'm looking for parks with splash pads. You can type splash pad into that search bar, and it is going to give you a list of the parks that have that amenity in them. So you can see Huron Park there, Lyons Park, and Churchwall, MacArthur Park. And you can do this for every asset and amenity in these parks. If you're looking for ADA compliant parks, you can search by those. If you're looking for family-friendly parks, you can look by those. If you don't really have anything in mind that you're looking for, but you'd like to explore our parks, and you've heard the name, you can also search by the name of that park. So we've got Amvet, Central Park. Say I've never been to Apple Corner, but I heard about it. You can click on it, and this map will zoom right into it for you. So this is going to be, again, available on our website soon. And from there, I would like to recap on our water infrastructure, with the help and guidance of Director Klein, who's not here tonight, but him and his team members have made great leaps and bounds in our asset inventory collection. It's a little hard to see. So, the map that was there, it was showing you all, showing you all the assets in that area of the city. So each one of those stars, each one of those squares, diamonds, all of those are individual assets. So as they're going through their daily work routines, they're editing and entering in more data on their tablets with their Juniper geodes, which are our GPS collectors. So as you can see here, now it's back, when you zoom in to that big giant collage of all of those colors and shapes, you can see that each one of those is an individual meter, valve, hydrant, anything that our people need to keep in running order. Our sewer infrastructure has almost caught up with our water infrastructure. Water was the ones to really take this and run with it to begin, and sewer is right along with them now. We are getting all of our catch basins, all of our manholes updated and inventoried, so we know their status, we know their location. We've also been working on EPA compliance again this year. We've been working in conjunction with Erie Soil and Water Conservation District to keep our illicit discharge maps up to date, and to keep our SWIP compliance up. We also did another big project this year for the Big Island Asset Inventory. One of the EPA requirements for our water treatment plant was that they make an asset or an asset map of all of their assets in the plant that are $5,000 and above. And this custom-based map and all of those points indicate a pump or a filtering meter that is valued at 5,000 or above. We've also increased public communication a lot this year. We've been utilizing public surveys, community voting, and embedded maps on our website. We have the road construction enclosure map that is available on the website that shows all the closed roads and all the construction going on for our residents. We have the leaf pickup and tree inventory, as well as the tree pickup map. So you can search and see your zone, figure out what times, you need to have those out and ready at the curve. And we've also done a lot of interdepartmental maps, so engineering, water, they both use the exact same assets. If engineering updates hydrant, water's going to see that. If water updates a hydrant, our fire department's going to see that. So there's a lot more communication about what's going on and what needs to be done. And as always, our kind of unofficial mission statement is just, is daily support for all of our departments. We provide spatial context to problems, policies, initiatives, bringing additional perspectives to complex decision-making. We also, through visual communication of spatial relationships, it broadens and improves our understanding. When we're sitting down and talking about things on a map and spatially, we're planning these new parks, these new neighborhoods, the spatial understanding gives a much broader perspective to these problems. And spatial data creates a more complete pictures of our city operations. So everything that these water and sewer field workers are doing, everything that we're doing in planning and zoning and code enforcement, we're able to look at that all in a big picture with this GIS. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Commissioners, questions or comments? So this is really important work, and I know there are some folks who, or there may be some folks who are listening to all this thinking, "Oh, you're just out there going out there and having fun with computers." And, of course, at a very basic level, what we are doing is keeping proper track of taxpayer-owned investments, and that's always important, and it's always an appropriate government function. But Mr. Klein has shared with me a little bit more in terms of why this is so terribly important, because we have a lot of assets that are underground, and we can't see them, and we don't know, in many instances, when they were put there. And then we go to dig for it and to connect, you know, point A to point B, and it turns out they're not where we thought they were because somebody never kept track of that years ago. So this allows us to catch up with all of that. We are excavating and keep track of all that. So there's a huge tax savings or money savings aspect of this as well, in addition to all the other things that you point out. So I know it seems a little technical, but it's just terribly important. I appreciate very much what you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job, Tiffany.
And now, we are going to have some representatives of our Tree Commission come to give us an update, an annual Tree Commission update. First is, I guess, maybe Bree, you're the only one, so Bree Holman is a member, longtime member of our Tree Commission, along with Jim Arthur, who's out here as well. Okay, and we appreciate the important work that you do to make us such a great urban city, I mean, forest, urban forest city.
That's right. Yeah, because when it gets hot, we want a tree. Again, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to be able to give an update. We love the opportunity to do this at least once a year, just to kind of let you guys know what we've been doing on the Tree Commission side, and also, it's kind of our opportunity to really tell the whole city what's been going on, so we do appreciate it. I have to say that, you know, when we first started doing this a few years ago, the tone was really, we need to do more, and we're not doing enough to really manage the forest infrastructure that we actually have. I can say now, we're starting to kind of change our tune a little bit. There's a lot of really, really great things that are happening, and I think you guys are going to see that in this presentation. So first, the big nitty-gritty, everybody wants to know how many trees were taken down, trimmed, and planted. 134 removed, 166 trimmed, 107 stumps removed, and 65 planted. So in 2018, we still are kind of in that set of taking down more trees than we are planting right now. But that's all because, if you guys recall, gosh, I think it was about four or five years ago when we came, we did that first inventory, we really stated that there was more than 600 trees that were just immediately needing to be taken down. So if you guys look at kind of the course of what's been going on over the past few years, city has really upped its game in what they're doing with urban forest management. We're definitely taking down way more trees. Most of those trees, again, are the worst of the worst. They're either standing dead, they're considered hazardous, those are our two priority trees, or if we've noticed that they are a potential nuisance, and they already are in decline with some type of disease or just in a later stage, they're also removed as well. Most of the other ones on there, the trimmings and some of the other additional removals are usually by request. And you can kind of see, we had a couple upticks of planting in the past few years. Both of those years were grant-related, and I'll tell you guys about another grant that we'll have. Probably another big thing, you know, not just the amount of actual physical management that's been going on with the trees, but there's been a really, really big fundamental change in the overall inventory management of the trees. So, and this is kind of like a good dovetail to what Tiff's been doing. She actually has worked really closely helping to integrate that initial tree inventory that was done back in 2013 into a usable database that's now being used for management on the day-to-day. So the GIS that's currently being used, that's Arc Online, which she showed you some maps from Arc Online, there's a central, kind of on-the-cloud database that we have all of the street trees and most of the park trees that are all now uploaded. The information there is the species, the size, the condition, any other type of potential nuisance issues, like overhead power lines and things like that. And they also use two other mobile GIS apps called Collector, which allows them just to collect and update information, and then another one called Workforce that allows them to kind of act as like dispatcher and worker to help integrate the information getting out into the field and vice versa. So again, data collection was in 2013. It took a few years, you know, for us to really, you know, GIS is no easy feat. You guys kind of remember, nobody started using email, you know, the day that it came out, nobody was using smartphones the day they came out. So it takes a little bit of time to kind of get used to using this new type of software. So originally, after that inventory was initially done, you guys remember, that's when we started doing the talks, we started really advocating for what the needs were for the forestry department, and then we were able to use that information to write grants, you know, and a lot of that, you saw, some of the grants that we used to remove trees and also to plant some additional trees. Once that issue eight money really went into effect, and then some of that additional stormwater went into, excuse me, stormwater money went into effect, we were really able to kind of increase the amount of management that was going on. Then it immediately allowed us to say, "Hey, you know what? This inventory's there, we've got these tools, let's make sure that the management can be as effective as possible." So in 2016, they started really integrating that in to not only just this inventory that they could look at map-wise, but something that every day, the crews would go out, and as they trimmed a tree, they would immediately upload that information. As they went out on a call, whether it was a complaint call or whether it was something that they had just happened to see, they had access to update that information, and it could be looked at holistically. There was 10 minor and major overhauls with this. Obviously, any type of new technology is going to take time integrating, fine-tuning, making sure that people were properly trained to be able to use it. And then, obviously, again, this is a complete shift in how workers are doing their day-to-day, so it takes a little bit of time to get going. So it wasn't really until 2018 that, it was a well-oiled machine at that point, and things were really starting to get updated. It was being used all the way from 2016 to 2018, but again, there was kind of like that little bit of a buffer, you're getting used to it. What I can say now, and I don't think I have a dashboard on here, at Tree Commission meetings, what's been great for us is they actually send us a clip of the dashboard of what's going on. We know what the trees were supposed to be removed at the beginning of the year, we know where the crews are currently at, we know where they're working, and we can ask lots of questions regarding that. So it allows everything from both data collection, management, efficient workforce, to communication back and forth, it's that whole picture. Another end of it, too, is communicating back to the public, and there's a new public tree inventory that's now up on the website as well. So again, it looks a lot like the maps that Tiffany had showed you before, lots of dots on here. But as you zoom in, you can see that all these different colored dots represent different trees. A homeowner can actually put in their address and see what trees exist out into the tree lawn in front of their home or near their park. They can actually click on that tree, and there'll be information on it as to whether or not that tree is going to be trimmed that year as well. So the idea is, hopefully, they get a little bit more informed before they can just call in, but even if they don't, you know, they can check on something like that. And they can also help to update, too, if they happen to be an arborist and maybe a tree's misidentified, you know, they can kind of help be another person that kind of helps to fine-tune the database. For residents that want to get there, if you go to the city website, you click on Public Works under the Residents tab, and you click on Forestry, and there's a little tab right there. Otherwise, there's a direct link here as well. But one of the other great things about this is, again, is this idea that we're using this database, we're using these GIS tools that have really helped to create these efficiencies amongst the workforce and help that interdisciplinary departmental work. So just to kind of show you how all these overlays really work together, if a citizen were to call in to the administration and have a particular issue with a given tree, the administration then can use that app called Workforce to then put out a work order, to say, "Hey, a tree there needs to be looked at." At that point, it might go to Horticulture, which would be where the arborist is, Tom, he might go out and look at the tree, or it might go directly to Forestry, whether it's an emergency trimming or a potential removal that needs to be happened. Also, as engineering projects are happening, engineering can also, if there was a street that was redone, if there was water lines that were changed, whatever it might be, that maybe that project impacted one of the trees, they can also have access to the database and be able to upload it as well. So if you guys remember the street, or, excuse me, the sidewalk program, with many of the replacements of sidewalks, trees would either be trimmed, or their roots would be ground, or the tree itself would be completely removed. All of this now is getting updated by multiple types of departments, but it's all one big database that can be shared, and it makes for a much more well-informed Tree Commission Department and then the public as well. So just some highlights from the Tree Commission as well, last year. It was our 27th year to receive the Tree City USA Award. We're hoping this year, fingers crossed, with all the use of GIS, that we may get a growth award this year again. We've held our Arbor Day celebration, along with the Go Green Celebration. And probably one of the other biggest things is, again, there's a lot of information, or, excuse me, there's a fair amount of money that's being used right now to help get caught up on our trees. That's the trimming and the removals that really need to be done. But again, you guys kind of saw that, you know, we kind of have good years and bad years on planting, and a lot of that is because we need to still write grants to get some of that done. Aaron Klein from the Engineers Department spearheaded a Great Lakes Restoration Initiative grant that awarded the city $100,000 to plant over 250 trees in this next year. So next year, we're going to be able to talk about even more that was done. But again, another thing that we've been able to do with this GIS data is we've been able to look at areas within the city that might be a little bit lacking in some of the trees, and we can also capitalize on, you know, again, street projects like Gartland Ave. We had, we're starting to do something that we haven't done in a long time, which is these neighborhood-type plantings. So Gartland Ave had about 30 ivory silks planted this year. Hancock Street, there was the tanger, oaks, some London Plains, I think there was one other species in there, too, Philip Poplar. And then Adrian Circle was a unique one. That was actually a citizen who, trees had been removed in that neighborhood because of the sidewalk program, but there really wasn't anything slated to be replaced. So she had asked, you know, "How can we get more trees?" And we had asked her, "Well, trees need to be cared for, not just planted, so would you mind going around your neighborhood, asking who really wants a tree and who's going to help care for it for us? Because it can't always just be the city crew, there's just not that much capacity." So that was an interesting one, where she talked to some of her neighbors, we found out exactly who wanted the tree, and we were able to put those trees in. Another thing I still want to talk about, storm damage is something that has just been an issue that the forestry departments had to deal with every year. It's not going to necessarily go away, it's just how well can we manage it? This past year, we had two major storm events. Those two major storm events caused the crews to kind of get backlogged for about two weeks, spending time cleaning up everything. On top of that, not only do we have our tree list of trees that we know need to be removed at the beginning of the year, usually after every storm, we add several trees to that list. And those trees, again, we have a lot of storm-risk trees, which are our older trees, and also our trees that are in poor condition, that usually tend to be the bad actors every time that there's a storm. So this is kind of one of those reasons why trying to move towards more of a zone trimming or making sure that we're always trying to hit above 150 trees every year, or even higher on the trimming, helps us to reduce these types of issues with storm damage. So, you know, not very many recommendations, because we're just absolutely thrilled on what's been actually happening in the city. There's so much more management that's going on, and I think it really shows. You can't drive down a street, you can't drive down too many miles in Sandusky without seeing a young tree that's been planted, you're seeing trimming going on all the time. And so, as far as our recommendations, you know, continue to support what we're doing, continue this push that we have towards getting some of those dead and dying standing trees that are out there removed, getting that, working towards that zone trimming, if we can get to it, would be great. GIS has proven to be just an excellent addition to the management of the forestry. So anything that we can do to continue to foster that and support that effort, I think, would be excellent. The crews are fantastic, so I can't say enough for them. They, you know, when they're out there doing the storm cleanups, you know, when they've been out there doing the planting, and they really do an excellent job, and we're happy that the crews have actually increased in numbers as well over the years. And again, much of this stuff wouldn't even be possible without that issue eight money and without some of the extra stormwater money. And when a lot of people kind of ask, like, "Why are stormwater funds being used for trees?", the trees can really actually soak up a lot of stormwater. There's a big misconception that trees are only going to suck it up through their roots. There's something called leaf intercept of stormwater, where it's actually the surface area of the leaves actually help to stop water from even hitting the ground and then evaporating. So the more forest canopy we have, the more that our canopy is closed, the more stormwater management that we have, which then generates into less combined sewer overflows for lake area, which is something that we really want. Last but not least, if you guys just want to come talk with us about trees, we meet every month to talk about trees. It's the last Tuesday of the month at 4:00 at the greenhouse, come and see us. And again, I just want to do a formal invitation, this year, Saturday, April 27th, is going to be the Go Green Celebration and our Arbor Day tree planting down at the greenhouse from 10:00 to 1:00, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I just want to thank the Tree Commission for everything you guys do. I know you put a lot of time and effort in, and it was really nice to see in the presentation that we're focusing on the neighborhood plantings again. It's so important, and I think it's good to point out that you guys really take a lot of time and effort and care into choosing those trees to make sure we don't have, we're making things more and more efficient with the GIS, with the types of root systems that they have, so we don't end up with sidewalk problems in the future. So thank you for what you do.
I have to add one more thing, because I just forgot about it. We also actually had a large donation this year to do a neighborhood planting. So we're currently in the midst right now of selecting which neighborhoods that we're going to be doing those in, and that was just from a citizen donation. So not only do we get funds, obviously, the majority of the funds do come through, you know, issue eight stormwater, but even citizen donations can go a long way with a lot of this as well, too.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
One of the unique things is that the GIS implementation is excellent for citizens to be able to call in and know the status of their trees, which I have to thank Ms. Bree Holman for bringing that up. She brought it up years ago, and she's like, "That's a great thing," and she championed that cause through to make sure that we've got a more functional Tree Commission that works with all our city departments. So, thank you.
Additional questions or comments? I did pull up the website, I had not looked at that before, where you can look at each and every tree, what its condition is, what type of duty it is, what its number is. I think it's really great, and so I'd encourage people at home to take a look at that, if they have a tree out in front of their boulevard, they're curious to know what it is and if it's scheduled. You know, I'm thinking that Mr. Brady and Ms. Twine, you're the only ones here tonight who were here six years ago, when Ms. Holman came and gave us a report at that time, and I think at that time, we all tried to hide behind this little secret out here, because, you know, it was obvious that our urban forest was in terrible shape, and it was not contributing to property values, which a good, healthy urban forest can do, and to do all the other things that you mentioned. And, you know, that was something that the residents instinctively understood when they supported issue eight. That was one thing that was very important to them, and I'm glad we've been able to keep and increase, keep our promise and increase the amount of work that we're doing every year to add to that. So I want to add my thanks to what the Tree Commission does as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodding.
I went last year, the Tree City USA, I believe it's Avon, Avon Lake, we were up in that area last year. I'm not going to go
I'm not going to go this year, I have a scheduling conflict, but could we have a decent car for him this year? I wrote, Jim Arthur had me on pins and needles. We had, what year was that, about 84, we had a city car? And what was ironic, when we pulled in the parking lot, the guy goes, where are you guys from? I said, well, the seal, and I looked at the seal, and it said Sandusky or something, there were some letters missing off. But it was a beater, right? The windshield wipers.
My windshield wipers.
Yeah. I said, you're killing me. He asked me if I could see, and I'm not even driving, I'm in the front seat.
Mr. Klein wants to make sure the equipment is well depreciated.
Great job, Go Green, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we turn now to our regular items of business, but before that, Commissioners, would someone care to make a motion to accept the communications from staff?
Second.
Been a motion, second discussion. Lot of objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mrs. Krester, first of all, Commissioners, I'm sorry, of any of the items on our consent agenda, are there any that you would like to move to the regular agenda? If not, then Mrs. Krester, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. Murray and members of the Commission. Item A on the consent agenda is a contract extension with Republic Services for the 2019 City's Yard Waste Collection Program. Item B is an agreement with IMX Technologies Incorporated for the Kronos Support and Maintenance for 2019 and 2020. Item C is the annual sludge hauling contract with the Erie County landfill for calendar year 2019. Item D is a transportation services agreement for the Sandusky Transit System with Cancer Services. And item E is a transportation services agreement for the Sandusky Transit System with the Erie County Veterans Service Commission.
Commissioners, having heard the consent agenda, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine, Ms. Lloyd, excuse me.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances A through E as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances A through E, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion, second, discussion. Mrs. Krester, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
And now on the ordinances, on the ordinances, please.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Those ordinances are adopted. Mrs. Krester, would you present item number one, please?
Item number one is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amendment to the transportation services agreement between the City of Sandusky and First Transit Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio, in relation to the Sandusky Transit System, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Been a motion, second, discussion. Mr. Freitas, I see that you're here. Would you mind stepping in the microphone, just giving us a little summary, give the public at home especially a little summary of what it is we're looking to do here? I know this is part of the expansion you've been talking about recently, and this is where we actually pay for it.
Yep. So what we're looking to do is, we started actually on February 3rd to add Sunday service to the Blue Line, which is the line that services 250 out to Kalahari. And then we're also looking at, on April 1st, starting a yellow express line that would service from Sports Force, Castaway Bay, Cedar Point to downtown, and just making that a seasonal route from April 1st to November 1st. So what we're, when I wrote the 5311 grant with ODOT, I received an additional $119,000 and some odd change, and then the contract with Cedar Point would make up the difference to be able to pay for the $202,000 to expand the service for that.
Thank you. Misses, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
Again, I'd like to thank Mr. Freitas for a good job, you know, securing more funds and more business. I mean, we may even be profitable yet.
Working on it.
Right. Very good.
Yeah, and I, you know, I've shared with you, Mr. Freitas, how I feel about how important I feel your work is and what contributions it makes to our community, both in terms of people being able to get around, but in terms of what a good community ought to look like, because we are making sure that some of the most very vulnerable in our community have access to goods and services and transportation. And this is so important, because it's a statement of who we are. And although, and I understand Mr. Lockhart's comment, but I also want to make sure that we reiterate that transit is never going to be something that breaks even on its own. And if you dig deep into what automobile transportation looks like, it is actually very, very heavily subsidized from a taxpayer's standpoint, and this is just evening that, I think, and making it available to people. So I hope we do get closer and closer to breaking even, but I don't want the public to ever expect that it's a break-even proposition.
You're correct.
It is, and it's an important service that we provide.
You're correct in your assessment of what I said, yep.
Thank you.
And I will add that it's about 11% that the city contributes towards the overall budget of that, and the rest is subsidized through ODOT and the contracts and the fair. So for what we, the service we provide and the number of people that benefit from it, I think it's a pretty good, pretty good deal.
You shared recently that the Perkins Township trustees dedicated some funding to add some shelters out in Perkins Township, and that's very much appreciated. Those are the kind of partnerships that we need to make this work and to be sustainable, so.
Yeah, it's fantastic. We've been working to try to identify the, you know, the highest-use locations in the township, and so hopefully we'll have three to four new shelters out on 250. So we're excited about that and appreciate their partnership with that.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further comments on the legislation? Mrs. Krester, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please.
Item two is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with a proposed Pier Track pump station and Farwell Pump Station improvements projects, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution and the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion, second, discussion.
Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I know that we're missing our agenda, and I know pinch hitting for him is Jane Cullen, and I wonder if she'd just give us a brief overview of what we're doing here. I know just a small bit of this picture, Ms. Cullen, and that is that we're looking at age, 37 years between replacement, and we're looking at a driving force called the EPA. So if you can expand on why we're doing this.
Sure. Both stations were built approximately mid to late 1950s, so the buildings themselves are pretty old, they're over 60 years old. And then there were some slight improvements in the 80s, early 80s. There were a couple pumps at each station built, or replaced. So the majority of the, between the building and the equipment, it's either over 60 or over 30 years old, so it's past its useful life. So those need to be replaced on both of those. And that includes everything from the SCADA system, the HBAC, some of the roofing material, the pumps, just basically quite a bit of things on both of those. And that is an EPA mandate, that's part of that, the city doesn't have a choice. These both need to be done and operational. The deadline in the permit is December 1st of 2020, and it's going to approximately, there's two stations, approximately 15 to 18 months completion for both of those. And there is a split in the sewer agreement, the county is responsible for, in the Farwell, it's 55%, and then Pier Track, right now, it's at 48%. So part of it's the EPA mandate, and the majority of it is the age, it needs to be updated and replaced. The pumps are old, and they're past their useful life.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Brady.
Interesting component of this, as we usually do, is we borrow the money to do this.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that, that's a...
It's a great deal on the borrowing.
Yeah, it's in the agenda item where it's currently at 0%.
It's a good number.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Cullen, it's good that you're here tonight, and we can see you, and the public can see you, because you are a force behind the scenes, and we see your name on so many documents, and I know you make big contributions to Engineering Department and Public Works. So I'm sorry for the circumstances, that Mr. Clyde has had a family injury, everything's okay, but it's good that you should be here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Krester, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a managed print services agreement with MT Business Technologies Incorporated of Avon Lake, Ohio, for printing services and the leasing of four new multi-function printers through U.S. Bank Equipment Finance, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion, second, discussion. Mrs. Krester, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a three-year contract with Ohio Telecom Incorporated of Port Clinton, Ohio, for internet and telephone services, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion, second, discussion. Well, I guess it's not the most exciting stuff, but it's necessary, so thank you, Mr. Hamilton, for stewarding this.
Yeah, that's good.
What's that?
Said, try taking it away.
Yeah, try taking it away. That's not going to happen. We know where that line is, so we're not going to cross that. Mrs. Krester, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. And that concludes our regular items of business. We turn the meeting over to the city manager for his report. Whoopsie.
Thank you, Commission President, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start with administration. I'd like to advise the Commission that due to a recent retirement, Dan Pajali will be replaced by Stephen Sturgill, also of the Sandusky City Schools and the Records Commission, effective as of February 4th. I'd also like to request a motion to appoint the following individuals to the Erie County Board of Health. That would include a motion, and we'll do these in order, first for Leroy Sizemore Jr.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion, second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And then the second would be Mr. Charlie Murray.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion, second, discussion. Note my abstention. Mrs. Krester, would you pull the Commissioners on this one, so that my abstention can be noted?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Abstain.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Thank you. For the Police Department, Officer Michael Schock announced his retirement effective February 10th of this year, this week. Officer Schock served four years in the United States Marine Corps and 22 years with the department, and we want to thank him for his service to the country and to this community. Also, the Fire Department is in the process of interviewing candidates for two vacant positions to replace two retirements. And the next scheduled Finance Committee meeting is Friday, February 22nd, at 8:00 a.m. in the Commission chambers for Public Works. Staff would like to remind developers and prospective purchasers that the city has over $100,000 in federal brownfield funds through July of this year for environmental site assessments, which are typically required prior to purchasing property. Please contact the Public Works Department at 419-627-5829 for more information. And again, those are brownfield dollars that are available to do a brownfield assessment of any private property. Also, after reviewing qualifications, interviewing four firms, staff has selected Richard Bowen and Associates as the architect for the Justice Center project. We will begin negotiating a professional design contract with that firm immediately. We know that's a project that others were anxious to see get going, and that selection will allow us to move forward now more quickly. Moving to community development, Tracy Dennis is requesting a satisfaction of mortgage for her 2005 CHIP owner occupied rehabilitation program loan. Ms. Dennis received a $22,216 loan in 2005. The current amount owed to the city is $11,108. Ms. Dennis has already requested the city commission a reduction of $3,169 to her loan, which is approved at the meeting on January 28th of this year. Ms. Dennis is now requesting an additional reduction to her loan in the amount of $2,629.74, which would leave a payback amount to the city of $5,377.57. Prior to closing on the sale of the property, a new lien was filed. To offset the additional lien, Fidelity National Title reduced their fees by $205. Brookshire Hathaway reduced their commission by $400, and Howard Hand reduced their commission by $265. If the sale of the property does not take place, the bank will continue to foreclose on the property. City staff is recommending approval of the satisfaction, because all involved parties have reduced fees to cover the additional lien in order to allow the sale to take place and keep the property from going into foreclosure. We'd ask for a motion to consider this adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
have reduced fees to cover the additional lien in order to allow the sale to take place and keep the property from going into foreclosure. We'd ask for a motion to consider this adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. It's also worth noting, if it goes into foreclosure, we're likely to lose additional value, and this is a structured sale, an organized orderly sale, I should say, is our best bet for recovering what we can. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Moving on to the planning department. January two thousand and nineteen fixed route numbers more than tripled from, this is Sandusky Transit, so the January two thousand and nineteen numbers for fixed routes more than tripled from January of last year. In January of two thousand and eighteen, we had four thousand, six hundred and ninety riders on fixed routes. In January of two thousand and nineteen, we had thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty riders on fixed routes. The increase is likely due to the new partnership with Kalahari, increased marketing efforts, and routes being added to Google Maps. So thank you, Nicole, for your continued efforts to...
I think she must be giving away something on those buses. Those are astounding. Great, thank you.
Maybe the police department should put some undercovers on some of that. What's going on that's getting so many people on?
They already are. Air marshals.
Yeah, exactly. But it is pretty astounding and exciting, and staying in line of improved transportation services for all of our citizens, we're also excited to note that Greyhound Bus Lines is going to be moving their local bus stop to the Sandusky Transit System facility located at twelve-thirty North Depot Street, starting on March first. The bus will be making four stops per day, seven days a week. This will make connecting throughout our area easy for city residents, as we will have a hub for Amtrak, Greyhound, and Sandusky Transit, all using the same facility to pick up and drop off passengers. And for those who aren't aware, the current Greyhound stop is all the way out on one oh one, near the Turnpike, actually, isn't it? Or is it Route Two, sorry? And so this is a much, for those who rely on public transportation for both short and long trips, this is an incredible added convenience for Sandusky residents, and Nicole has aggressively worked on this since she got here, and it's another win under her cap, so we're very thankful for it. Also, the regular planning commission meeting is scheduled Wednesday, February twenty-seventh, at four thirty p.m. in the first floor conference room. The regular board of zoning appeals meeting will be scheduled February twenty-first, at four thirty p.m. in the first floor conference room. And a landmark commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February twentieth, at four thirty p.m., also in the first floor conference room. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Whoopsie. Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager? If not, then we will turn to old business, any items of old business? Any items of new business?
Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I'd like to make a motion for one executive session this evening.
Pending litigation?
Pending litigation.
Second.
Then a motion, and second, discussion. Ms. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That executive session is set. Other items of new business? I do have one. I need to set a public hearing for the meeting of March twenty-fifth, to, which would be concerning the city's fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan and our one-year action plan for two thousand and nineteen and an update to the analysis of impediments of fair housing choice. Is that, Ms. Cresser, is that, am I able to set that, or does that have to be by motion?
Motion.
By motion. Would someone care to make such a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second.
There's been a motion, and second, discussion. All in favor of setting that hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, and the hearing is set. Any other items of new business? Then we turn to public participation. Anyone having any comments on any city business? Please tap to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and share with us your thoughts.
Good evening. I'm Joan Chaney Burton. I live at two thousand and twenty-four Foxborough Circle. I came, hold on. I came to you earlier, like, late last year about gang stalking, and I didn't know if it was going on in Sandusky or not, but I was in California, came back in two thousand and seven. I worked for the We Care Home in Rialto, California, to care for clients. A situation happened there where I had to report abuse, so I had to leave that position and come back home to Sandusky, Ohio. Ms. Lily Moseley owned that We Care Home, and I'm not sure if you're affiliated with the Moseleys or Gilbert Moseley or them on Heritage Street. A prior, well, I met other ones in the hospitality shelter there. It was Chavez, it was Callaway, it was Moseley, it was Little, and it was Sunday House. I met them all at the shelter there. Well, upon being back since two thousand and seven, I hear they're here, and I hear they told a few lies on me about some things that happened that weren't true, which I'm currently looking into. The main thing that they lied about was that some, that I had pedophile one of their residents, or not resident, but one of their family members or what have you. And I'm still in the process of looking into that situation.
So Ms. Burton, I, let me...
Well, it contains to the gang stalking. And what I learned through reading the gang stalking manual that I have right here in front of me, it says that the go-to of the gang stalkers is something sexual, something like being a pedophile, or like you touch somebody inappropriately. It's always something sexual, because they want to discredit someone. The only thing that I can think that they would want to discredit me about is because I had reported abuse, and that abuse was necessary for me to report. And I noticed ever since I've been back, I have been gang stalked, and it does say that they will lie on you by any means necessary. They'll go into your bank account, they'll go into your assets, and they'll use them, and they'll go to the city authorities and use them against you. And I have felt some of that here lately. And they will also say that you're a fugitive. I had to do a report through the FBI, and I said, "Well, why is Mr. Moseley, Gilbert Moseley, saying I'm a fugitive from Rialto when I gave his mom my two weeks' notice saying that I couldn't be there anymore because of the abuse that I witnessed?" So upon coming back, Charlotte Callaway keeps mentioning all these innuendos about me and this and that and the other, which is here nor there, because I'm an honest, upstanding citizen. I have done nothing wrong, I'm not a fugitive, not a pedophile, not a sexual nothing. I'm just a regular human being that I go into my religious organization that helped me to maintain my sanity by going through all this, because they are using the authorities, and I do feel that in the community. So what I did was, because of the situation, I had to look up, I'm like, "What is going on?" Well, I looked up on it, and I looked up and saw gang stalking, and it just, it says that they will use the authorities, that's why I changed my name to Joan Chaney Burton for marriage fraud, for guardianship fraud, for suicide fraud, and identity theft. And all that went through and was approved, and is in the process of litigation. So what I'm saying here today is, if it happened to me, it could happen to anybody. Anybody can be gang stalked. They go through your assets, they use your assets, they tell the authorities, "Well, don't give her anything, she's not helping us, don't you see us, we're broke." And I'm like, "I am not your bank account, I am not in job application, I am not, all I can do is refer you to wherever you need to be." You know, I'm sick of, I'm sick of people gang stalking people for their assets and for whatever it is else they want, and I know one of them is my nursing license. And there was a situation that did happen to the nursing license, the payment, the renewal payment, I sent the payment in. They said, "Well, you can only do it electronically." I said, "Well, let me do it electronically." I tried, it didn't go through. When the meantime, I'm checking my nursing license, seeing if it got renewed, got renewed, it didn't get renewed, it lapsed. But in hindsight, and as a blessing, I'm glad it got lapsed, because I looked it up on the internet, there's eighty-five hundred people using my nursing license, but they have it no more to use. They cannot abuse people in the med pass, they cannot abuse people with treatments, they cannot abuse people without credentials that they don't have. So in hindsight, it has saved me from being sued, because they'll say, "Well, that's her," but I'm like, "I cannot be in eighty-five hundred places." So in hindsight, I just, I'm just gonna let it go, but I am moving and relocating because, for this reason, because I shouldn't have to go through all this. I shouldn't have to have people lie to me, "Well, she's a fugitive." When FBI said, "No, you're not a fugitive or nothing, your BCI FBI report is clean." They said, "Whoever's doing it, they're cutting and pasting someone else's FBI report and BCI report below your name. Just print it and send it to us." So all that is in litigation right now. And then it's like, "Well, where is she going? She can't get away from us, she can't leave us, she can't leave, she can't get away." And I'm like, "What are you talking about? Get away from what? I have committed no crime." You know, I'm a Jehovah's Witnesses, and I'm a backplace publisher, and I do have it here where they post as Jehovah's Witnesses.
Ms. Burton, could you, could you come to a conclusion in terms of what you would like us to do?
Well, the conclusion is, I'm trying to make the town aware of what's going on.